Yes, it's jail.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. We'll begin the meeting with a moment of silence and silent reflection. Thank you. I'll now ask our Sheriff Michael Murphy to step forward and lead us in the pledge.
The regions give the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Drick.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
And Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. The next agenda, next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I'm sorry. According to the board rules that we amended last week, we were actually going to do the approval of agenda after the role call. But I moved to approve the agenda.
Is there support?
Support.
And was that support by Commissioner Helserman?
And Nakagiri.
Okay. Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The next item is correspondence. We have one resolution from Alcona County asking for support for an economic impact study on the consumers' energy dams in Alcona County.
Motion to place on file.
Support.
Been moved and supported to place this resolution on file. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is the call to the public. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Don't everybody rush.
Mr. Chair, we do have three cards submitted from people in the chambers here. Randy Clausen from Howell, followed by Pamela Coomer from Heartland.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I've been attending commission meetings now for a few months and I attended the first one of the year this year. So as I've been attending, I've been impressed with just how complex issues come to this board. It's just amazing to me, all that you have to do and like the multi-page agendas, tonight's was 74. My printer was not working very well at the end of all that, but the weight of that discernment falls on your shoulders. And it was interesting to me to get to little snippets about the new people that came and the resources that they brought to this committee from where they've been and what they've learned. So I was interested in learning about the wisdom that they've gathered before and they bring to these meetings. It's going to be fun to watch that. I was surprised to hear the word prayer suggested to be put back on the agenda. The word prayer refers to religion for sure. Adding the word prayer seems to me to exclude a lot of people. In Livingston County, only 38% of Livingston County people go to church. So it is an exclusionary term. And that's up, but I want you to know that whether it is designated as prayer or silent reflections, after your vote on that, I want you to know that I will be praying for you during that designated time. And not only during that time, but I pray for you during the week too. So you know, the God of love and justice to whom I pray is not neutral about our choices. In faith, I'm trusting that through the collective wisdom of this board and the input from the community, that good will be done and will continue to come. As you know, from my prior input, I am concerned with public transportation for the disadvantaged in Livingston County. Would like to see that improved and on weekends. The first UMC Brighton Whitmore Lake where I attend has a Church and Society Committee and we collaborated this year with the Livingston County Transportation Coalition to present the 2023 Rosa Parks Transit Equity Day. And you all are invited and encouraged to attend. It's going to be a pancake breakfast at Torch 180, which is in Fowlerville. And it will be, I'm glad that you would come and see us. We promote public transportation. You are invited. And then after also, on the Saturday, you're invited to, you are invited by way of your newsletter to the Community Connect and that is also a place where community, people who need transportation, public transportation will be there along with the Livingston County Transportation Coalition. So I hope to see you at both places.
Pamela Coomer, Heartland, followed by Doug Helserman, Handy.
Hi. Hello, my name is Pam Comer from Church and Society, First United Methodist Church of Brighton and Whitmore Lake. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and your service to our community. I also would like to invite you to our second annual Livingston County Rosa Parks Transit Equity Day Pancake Breakfast and Community Recognition on February 3rd, 8 o'clock, Torch 180 in Fowlerville. This is a collaboration of First United Methodist Church and Society Lutz, the Livingston County Transportation Coalition, Sierra Club, and Torch 180. We would like, we'd love to have you join us in this community collaboration in support of transit equity. Also, we have learned from the Chamber of Commerce that businesses in our community have been struggling to find workers because of inadequate public transportation and high housing costs in our county. 24% of families in our county struggle to make ends meet. How long before these issues seriously impact the economic viability and quality of life here in our county? Let's talk about road safety and congestion. I drive 23 to Ann Arbor quite frequently. It's pretty bad sometimes. We can continue to expand and maintain our highways, hoping for reduced congestion, but numerous studies consistently show that adding capacity to roadways fails to alleviate congestion for long because it actually increases vehicle miles traveled. I would hope that you will seriously consider investment in public transportation for our community. Some townships in our county are to be commended for their progress in this area. Our community workers need it, our struggling families need it, our senior citizens need it, our folks with disabilities need it, and according to a recent study, 39% of millennials say it's important to them. Thank you, and I hope you will give this issue serious consideration going forward.
Is there anyone else in the audience wish to get up?
Doug Helserman, Handy Township.
Doug Helserman from Handy Township. I chose to be down here because this is my personal views as opposed to my official view as a commissioner, if there's such a difference.
Prayer should always be allowed, but never forced. I've not met anyone whose opinion about God could be.
Mr. Helserman, is that mic on?
Okay, faulty, faulty, faulty equipment here, someone without a finger to turn it on. Prayer should always be allowed, but never forced. I have not met anyone whose opinion about God could be easily swayed. No outside force can change one's truly held personal opinions. Any true change of opinion can be made only by the person themselves. Our Constitution has acknowledged this truth and has taken it to the next step. These closely held opinions may be said and acted upon in public settings, not just in one's own mind or in one's private property. Hence, we have the right of freedom of religion, freedom of speech, freedom of press, freedom of peaceable assembly. These liberties have natural boundaries of the golden rule and of the truth. No one is free to lie and no one is free to do evil to another person. Freedom of religion is not freedom from religion, as some people say. Separation of church and state is not separation of state and religion. There can be no singling out of one religion as the only established religion that may be, that may limit the full freedom for opposing religious points of view. Believe in the Creator, our founder said, was self-evident. They asserted that this was to be true. That means it was logical to assume a Creator. These are some of the simple reasons why I believe in a Creator. First of all, there is a beginning. The physical universe has not been in existence forever. The amount of usable energy in the universe is constantly decreasing. There will come a time when our universe will not exist. There is no energy-matter cycle where matter can be reconstructed naturally from escaping unusable energy. So in other words, there's no scientific way for our world to be only physical. Therefore, there is necessity of a nothing-to-something moment, a creation of something from nothing. In a predictable cause-and-effect world, making something out of nothing is impossible, but it happened. And that's why a Creator is the only option. It is truly self-evidence. Historical proof is different from scientific proof. History deals with human choice and is predictable in a different sense than a repeatable scientific experiment where absolute predictability is a universally accepted given. With the universe, with a universally predictable world, it is logical extension that there are universal predictable laws that govern the interaction between human beings and the rest of creation of the Creator. Searching for this Creator's opinion about His creation is a worthy goal in life. And I believe there is a Creator. I believe that prayer can bring us His favor. And I think that, as I said at the beginning, prayer should always be allowed, but never forced.
Thank you very much. Commissioner? You used your three minutes wisely. Do we have anybody on the screen?
I do have some commissioners. First off, we have Lori Cohen.
All right. Hi, Lori Cohen from Unadilla Township. As the majority of the board knows, I spoke at last week's call to the public regarding changing the moment of reflection to prayer. So I won't repeat my entire thoughts, but I will reiterate for you to please respect the diversity of the beliefs and faith of our Livingston County community and keep the moment of reflection in place. Thank you.
Next up, we have Sherri LaRue.
Hi, Sherri LaRue from Bruno Township. I too want to speak on the idea of prayer. I want to remind you that this United States of America was founded by men who believed in the Bible. And they believed that to be true. And the Establishment Clause has no bearing on this whatsoever. But in fact, in that Book of Truth, in Second Chronicles, God says, "If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray, and steep my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sin, and will heal their land." Common law is based on the Book of Deuteronomy, and if you haven't read that recently, give it a whirl. It's very enlightening. The other thing that's very, very important in this, in the concept of prayer, is that in John, the Book of John, God so loved the world that He gave His only Deaconed Son, that whoever believes in Him should not perish, but have everlasting life. For God did not send His Son into the world to condemn the world, but that the world through Him might be saved. He who believes in Him is not condemned, but he who does not believe is condemned already because he has not believed in the name of the Holy Deaconed Son of God. Prayer for this county, for this state, for this nation, for all those who don't know Jesus is vitally, vitally important. Thanks for your time.
Your time is up then.
Next up, we have Alyssa.
Good evening, everyone. Alyssa Davis from the city of Brighton. Thank you for hearing me. I just wanted to reiterate what I had said, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, that I, you know, I think it's wonderful that the more liberal community has their moment of silent reflection. I think that's great. I would like it to be all-inclusive and have both, really. Call it a silence, a moment of silent reflection and a moment of prayer. I think this would satisfy everyone. And really, you can never have too much God in anything, in my opinion. So that's really all I've got. Thank you for listening and thank you for everything you do.
Next, we have Cindy Mitchnewitz.
Hi, Cindy Mcnevich, Hamburg Township. I was really surprised two weeks ago at your last meeting that you changed the board rules to allow for five members of the commission to be on a committee. That's in clear violation of a portion of the Open Meetings Act where it says that the commissioners cannot meet as a majority of the board at any place unless it is posted as a public board meeting. I am happy to see that you are changing those rules, well, it's on the agenda, to change the rules back to four and to not allow any sitting board members to sit up and be involved in the discussion. I am concerned and I'm trying to find out if it's in violation to have the chair member, chairman, sit up and be involved in the discussion because that again would bring the total of the sitting at the table for the committee to be a majority of the board. And I also want to talk to you about the change of the word prayer from the silent reflection. As the person before me said, I'm okay with mentioning prayer or silent reflection and no prayer read out loud. Thank you.
Commissioner, that is all we have on Zoom and I do apologize for mispronouncing everybody's names. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That's all. There are no more hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Next, there will be the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting dated January 3rd. Chair will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So support.
Support.
Helserman.
Been moved and supported. Is there, are there any comments, questions, corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say by the same sign. The motion passes. We have approved the minutes. Next item is any tabled items from the previous meeting minutes? If we do not have any, we'll move on to reports and I would ask Jay Gross to give us his report, is the meeting, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sure. I have two things I'd like to report on. First of all, last Thursday morning, I was privileged to sit in on the Veterans Breakfast at Village Manor up on M59 and asked to say a few words. And afterwards, I met with a number of the veterans that were present. And during the course of maybe 45 minutes or so of conversation, I'd like to report that our veterans have a lot of concerns about our county. Briefly, they, they're concerned about the roads. They would like the road commission to do a better job. They're concerned about broadband, alluding to the fact that in some parts of the county, there's under service. Also, they had a message that they asked me to pass along to Director Toby that they didn't think it was a good idea to hang fiber optic cable from utility poles because in the event of damage from an accident or a storm, the utility companies are sorely lacking in being to respond quickly. So I have to pass that along to Director Toby for his consideration. They also were concerned about a lack of affordable housing in the county. And parroting Ms. Clausen's comments, they were concerned about public transportation. I tried to carry on a decent conversation with these folks. It was very enjoyable. They didn't threaten me in any way, so that was good. One additional comment relative to that breakfast was it was rather interesting. I was seated at a table with five veterans and there were several other tables that had gentlemen. And way on the other side of the room was one table with their wives. I don't know what the message is there, but you take it for what it's worth. The second report is later, the day I attended the retirement doings for Kathleen Klein Hudson, whose last day with the county was last Friday. I was pleased to hear that she has plans that if she's not on the road already, she will be shortly heading to warmer climes where every once in a while, something bright is in the sky, unlike what we have here. So I thanked Kathleen for her service and wished her well in her well-deserved vacation. Those are my reports. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross, and thank you for attending that breakfast with our veterans. Anytime you, anytime you want to go there, you're more than welcome, I'm sure.
They have a date scheduled early February.
Every month they do. Be glad to go with you. Next.
Over here.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of reports as well, if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind. I'm sorry, but I didn't notice. That's okay.
How could I not notice?
That's the question.
I don't know. I was pretty lucky over the last couple of weeks to hit a couple of our departments through invites. One was the EMS department, another first-class organization. Mr. Felpass and his team took me on a tour and just showed me the operations and what was going to happen in the future. And I just wanted to say kudos to them and thank you very much for taking the time of their day to show me their operation. Along with you, you and I had an opportunity on another meeting to sit on the Veteran Services Tax Exempt Meeting. And I had the opportunity to follow up with some of our townships and assist in cleaning up some of the verbiage there. And hopefully, that's going to lead to some changes at the state for some of the way that the paperwork is written for 100% tax exemption for our veterans. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. And that comes from one of our decorated veterans, Navy guy. Can't, we had a couple of Navy guys in our family too, so.
It's a good thing.
Thank you very much for the report. Are there any other reports? Commissioner Nakagiri?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I just want to comment on a report that I had emailed out over the weekend regarding the accepted receiving station. I had conversations with a couple of commissioners answering their questions. I extend to all of my colleagues, you know, if you, after you get a chance to read through that and if you have any questions to reach out, I'm happy to spend the time. It's a complicated problem. It is a problem that has, potentially has significant financial impact, unfavorable impact to the county if we're not, I'll say, on our toes. And so I encourage commissioners to do their due diligence and if part of that is, you know, give me a call, I'm happy to answer questions. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other reports? Well, that will go, we'll go on to resolutions for consideration. The first one is Resolution 2023-1-005 through 010. And it's a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the EMS to capital replacement for emergency medical services. We have someone to speak to that?
So moved, Helserman.
Support, Fiani.
Moved and supported. Do we have someone to? Oh, yes.
I think we discussed it pretty well at General Government Committee the other night, but this is pretty much a housekeeping issue. Previously, we had already approved the purchase of four ambulances, which are well in production or underway. Now we're transferring the money from our fund over into the capital improvement funds. So when those vehicles are ready, we can actually make those purchases. We made it change the county level that all our capital purchases are made out of that capital improvement fund a few years ago, thus necessitating the transfer from one fund to the other. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anyone have any questions for the director? So there's a motion and it's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chair, this one requires a roll call vote.
Okay. All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Second resolution is 2023-01-006. It's a resolution authorizing an increase in total authorized vehicles in the facility services fleet. Comes to us from the carpool. Greg, would you care to talk about that?
So moved.
Thank you.
Been moved and supported.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you. Joined by Kevin, the facilities director here. So this is pertaining to his department. Just a brief recap. This is to increase the fleet of the Facility Services Department from the current eight to nine by way of holding on to a vehicle that has already been replaced and was set to be auctioned. This is a 2013, needs a little bit of work to get back on the road, which we postponed until if and when this resolution is approved. Kevin can speak to the justification for this. Just to wrap up my portion, if, I don't anticipate there being any budget amendments necessary. This is a minimal addition that should wash in the course of the year, but we have the language in there in the event a budget amendment is needed. I believe Kevin had sent out an email to all the commissioners last week with some more information, but I'll let Kevin take it from here.
Yeah, good evening, commissioners.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. I sent out that memorandum last week, just kind of giving some support to what I'm trying to accomplish here. Really, all it's going to do is support our Facility Service staff. We have two mechanics at the county jail that don't have a vehicle, more so a truck especially, to complete their daily job duties. So this will allow us to do so at a low price point. So happy to discuss further.
Anyone have any questions? Any comments? Yes, Commissioner Nukagiri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank Mr. Eagleson for sending out that email. You know, when I, you might recall that I was unfavorable towards the resolution in committee, but after reviewing what you had put together, I will be voting in support of it. I, I thought your email was well-written, very thoughtful, laid out the, the points that I was interested in in terms of, you know, the, the impact of upon cost, you know, what it was costing us today, what it will cost us tomorrow. So anyway, thank you very much for sending that out. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the?
It's a roll call.
I'm sorry. This is a roll call vote. Benham Chair?
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nukagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
And Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next resolution is 2023-01-007. An authorization changing the 2023 budgeted driver positions.
Move for discussion.
Support.
Made and supported. Greg, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, sir. So again, a brief recap. ASLTS transitions to vans as a, as a larger share of our fleet, as I mentioned, is going to be over, over fifty percent of our fleet in, in the coming year will, will be comprised of either minivans or full-size vans. So the, the bottom line is that we no longer need to have a staff that is, that is nothing but CDL drivers. Would like to take this opportunity to, to, you know, to save some, cut some costs, and also relieve some of the administrative burden, not only on, on LOTS, but also the, the employees who, who do have to go annually for, for a CDL to a, a physical, DOT physical, and then to renew their CDLs, keep track of dates, so on and so forth. So it's, I, I believe, a, a change in, in the right direction budgetarily. So if you have any, any questions, and just to, I believe you, you received a copy of this, but it's about a ninety, ninety-six hundred dollar decrease in our 2023 authorized budget.
Are there any questions, comments? All those, I'm sorry, it's a roll call vote. Benham Chair, I'll get it sooner or later. I'll, I'll be here all evening, by the way.
We're, we're keeping you in line. Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nukagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
And Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next resolution comes from the Treasurer, Ms. Nash. It's a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donated funds on behalf of the Veteran Services Department.
Motion, Smith.
Support, Gross.
Made and supported.
So we also discussed the General Government, so I'll just briefly recap. A very generous Livingston County veteran sadly passed away, and upon his passing, he had an investment account that was valued in mid-December at roughly twenty-eight thousand, and he has named Livingston County Veteran Services as the recipient of that investment portfolio. The board, in order to accept, the board must take formal action to accept. It needs to be noted that the investment instruments that the funds are currently held in do not comply with statute that governs government investments. So we will immediately need to transfer in the name of Livingston County, immediately close the account and liquidate it, and then those funds will be dispersed in the form of a check payable to Livingston County. This resolution authorizes the Treasurer, for the sake of time, to sign all necessary forms to effectuate that transfer. Any questions on that?
Jenny, just real quick, is there, is there a, a means that we can just write this into your policy? So that, I suspect there'll be more bequeaths to the veterans, and maybe other, you know, maybe parks or whatever.
Interesting question, because I have been working for a long time on forming a donation policy, because we, as a county, the Sheriff's Office receives donations, the animal shelter receives donations. This happens to be sizable, but on a day-to-day basis, admittedly, we are not coming before the board asking you to accept a hundred dollar cash donation. So my answer is, I am in the process of forming a policy that I think would address that going forward.
Thank you. Are there any more? Anyone else care to comment? Any questions? Motion's been made and supported. All those in favor signify, I'm sorry, no, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I think we got you for two of them here.
You do.
We had another resolution, 2023-01-008. It's a resolution authorizing the acceptance of these donated funds on behalf of the Veteran Services Department.
So move, Helserman.
Second. Support. I'm sorry.
So I, I move that we approve Resolution 2023-01-009, a resolution authorizing the County Treasurer to establish the Veteran Services Donation Fund 233, Treasurer.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor signify. What? We'll have a discussion. Just to make him mad.
So I, I will point out in front of you is a resolution with red language. So I, out of committee came a very good question, and I have since spoken with legal counsel, and I also want to invite Ramon Baca's here to also participate in the, the, the discussion, along with Jill Riker, please. The question came about during committee as to these funds are donated funds. They have no restriction on them. They are a general donation. Mind you, they're coming from a veteran, so you, I think, can safely assume he's intending that it be used for the benefit of Livingston County veterans, but nothing formal in writing. When we have donated funds, we put them in a separate fund. So creating a new fund for veterans' donations is keeping with our normal accounting standards. We have a fund for the sheriff donations. We have a fund for animal shelter donations. The caveat to the veterans' donations is that there is a veteran committee that oversees the discretionary spending within the veterans' relief tax mileage. So the question came about in committee as to, does the veteran committee also need to approve, or does it have the authority to approve the spending and use of these donated funds? Because they are general in donation, general in nature. I've shared with you my correspondence with legal counsel. That response came back indicating these would be out, these donated funds would be outside the scope of the veteran committee's discretion. It would be an appropriation by the Board of Commissioners. Just as sheriff donation funds are, you know, a budget is brought forward for those, the county board approves the budget for those, animal shelter the same. So this is, this would be in keeping with general county budgeting policy and procedure. The caveat the legal counsel brought up is the, in the budget process, the county board could appropriate some or all of those funds for veteran relief purposes. And in doing so, that would then fall under the discretion of the veterans' committee to determine which veterans, how much for what that discretion would then be, would follow the veterans' relief procedure. The language in the resolution, the revised resolution in front of you, my intent is to make that clear. And I know that Ramon is here to speak, as well as Jill Riker, if you would. So kindly invite them.
I have a question, if I could, Mr. Chair. In, in the, in the example of the sheriff, the sheriff has the full authority to spend the donations without consulting anybody else. Is that correct?
Well, they bring forward their budget. They budget those funds just like any other expense they would have in the normal budget process. So they're in the budget process, they are bringing forward their expected expenses, and that becomes approved by the board.
Okay, so, so the board, the board for this is the Veteran Services Committee. We could take it upon ourselves and, but we don't approve the veterans' budget, do we?
You do. You do. So this is really, in my opinion, the only difference between this, these donated funds, and the veterans' mileage funds is that they will not need the veterans' committee approval for expenditure unless the county board deems some or all of these funds as veterans' relief funds. Does that make sense?
So, so in other words, this would be used for veterans as opposed to buying a new couch for the office?
So the donated funds, because they do not have a restriction on them, it's just a general donation. They could be used for, it has to be used for the Veteran Services Department. So that could be a copier. That could be wages and staff time. It can be, by board budget and appropriation, used as veterans' relief dollars as well, for maybe veterans that don't meet the criteria of the indigent veterans, you know. So there can be an appropriation that deems these funds veterans' relief funds.
Mr. Deaton?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a couple of questions, so I can clarify this in my mind. I know Mr. Riker and Mr. Baca can comment on their budget, but the way this works is this was donated, and since it was a large sum of money, it's coming into line of accounting under the treasurer, and then it obviously has something to do with, the board would have to make a determination on how it's spent. Is there any way that the veterans' services, other than putting it into their relief fund, is there any other way that they could make a line of accounting for this, or?
Well, so let me try to clarify. Director Baca is going to put together a budget in his normal budgeting process for the use of these funds, as does the sheriff for his donated funds, as does the animal shelter director for her donated funds. That is the responsibility of the director to bring forward their budget. And then in the budget process, the board agrees, disagrees, talks through, and comes to a consensus, hopefully. Does that help? It's a normal budget process still. It just doesn't need to go through the veteran committee. According to the legal counsel, and.
It seems to me that we should include, that the committee should be included in these decisions. That's, that's what I think, that it, and then it should be the normal, it should be a normal, as normal as possible, money that they come in, they're responsible for. They, they, they can take this, do they have the ability to take a donated fund and on their own authority move it into the veterans' relief?
No.
They cannot do that. But, but if we, if we designated for that, they cannot take it out and use it for another purpose.
Correct.
So, okay.
Typically, funds for veterans and veterans' services need to be moved fairly quickly. There's someone in need. So for them to come to the board and meet with the board and then ask for this money seems kind of antiquated. Is there anything we can do to get this away from the board, or they're going to have to come and present something to us in this form as a resolution to say, hey, we need X amount of dollars for, because donations could grow, is what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, so every year during the annual budget process, if they want, if they, the, the veterans' department wants to request a portion or all of these funds be used for veterans' relief, they would budget that as such in their annual budget process. And then that would be either approved by you as a body or not approved, and, but at the point that that budget is approved, then that becomes veterans' relief funds that are then the discretion of the veterans' committee.
Thank you.
I want to follow up. When you said it would be, it would become veterans' relief fund, it wouldn't, if I, my understanding of listening to the discussion is they wouldn't necessarily be veterans' relief dollars. It could be used for something else veterans-related. Am I correct?
Well, it be, it would only become veterans' relief dollars if designated as such in the budget process. So we have twenty-eight thousand dollars. So the veterans' department comes forward in their budget process and says, we would like to use fourteen thousand of that for veterans' relief purposes that are outside this, for ineligible veterans, right? That becomes veteran relief dollars if approved for that use by the board. Then, now the veterans' committee has the discretion over the policy of providing the relief, which veterans, how much for what. That's veterans' committee jurisdiction. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Gross?
I guess I'd like to back up a little bit. These funds are going to be available almost immediately, so we don't need to worry about the budget going forward. They're going to have access to the funds this year, this budget year already. So it, you know, it seems to me we should have it available to Veteran Services Committee and let them decide how to, how to use it. And so, without worrying about the budget, because this money hopefully will be gone by, before the next budget year. If you find something.
So right now, these funds are going to come in if this passes, which I, it, it almost has to pass, because if we're going to accept the donation, we have to put it into a segregated special revenue fund. Then the question becomes, okay, what's the compliance for spending? So, once the funds are received, then I would expect the normal process to be the veterans' department coming forward and establishing, they'll have to do a budget amendment, because now they have twenty-eight thousand dollars they haven't had before. And they'll establish a budget amendment for the current twenty-three year. And then this discussion will play out.
So, so if we pass this resolution, what you say will happen? Is that, is it?
We have to establish a separate fund for receiving the donations. Then it becomes, you know, the wording in this was to help this discussion and for everyone to be on the same page when it comes to how do we expend these funds.
But it has, we receive it, we put it in our thing, it has to be budgeted before it can be spent.
Yes.
And then it'll be spent in the normal fashion that anything else would be spent.
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
And I motion the resolution authorizing the County Treasurer to establish the Veteran Services Donation Fund 233.
Do we have it? Do we have to take? Did you move? Did you move this with the amendment when you moved it? Was that your intention? When, okay. Okay. So do you? So if that's your intention, then I think we're probably ready, I'm ready to vote.
I think we wanted to speak on this.
Okay.
If we can, commissioners. So Joe Riker, Chair for Livingston County Veteran Services. I kind of wanted to, I completely agree with what most of you commissioners have stated up there. I guess this is unique. We've never had this size of a donation, but I will say this is the first time that it's been brought to our attention to be used like this. Typically, the commissioners never have any input on how we use our funds in our office. And I keep hearing relief. I say input. We asked for the budget and you proved that because you want to make sure we're spending the way that we're supposed to be. But that all comes from the committee and the director, not just the director pushing it to it. The committee approves that budget first and then it goes to you for approval. So with that being said, the language in this, the language in this is in my opinion, is a little bit vague and it gives you commissioners the authority to start any initiative that you want, that you think will benefit veterans, which I believe is wrong, which is why I think the wording needs to be changed. And I will state this because 2018, Genesee County Commissioners tried to spend $50,000 on a golf outing that would benefit veterans because vet, veterans can go to it for free. And in reality, I'm not saying that any of the commissioners on this commission would do that. But the whole point is that's why the Veteran Services Committee is here, is we're supposed to be taking care of the veterans and you appointed us to do that. It is our, it is our job to do that and that we do it voluntarily because we want to take care of veterans. When Genesee County did that, the commissioner, there was actually one commissioner that was going to benefit from it because they were friends with the person that owned the golf place and they were going bankrupt. I mean that, so that's, that's the reason why the veterans committee exists. And I, I want to point, I, I agree with all the commissioners that made comments that, you know, this is for us to decide, not to say that you guys can't oversee it, but it should start with us. And I, I believe the language in it is when the whereas, it says the donations for Livingston County Veteran Services Department, the funds shall be held by the county treasurer and appropriated by the county board for the benefit of the Veteran Services Department. It doesn't say anything about the committee in that. So although at the budgeting process, I feel like because that, the way that language, it, and I guess the lawyer, the, the county lawyer can make his comment on this too, but I feel like that it really should be the VA appropriated by the county board to the Veteran Services Department. So where you're giving it to the Veteran Service Department, instead of just saying that for the use of the Veteran Service Department, if it's for the use of the, I don't know, I feel like that's vague and it, it could determine where the commissioners can choose what they want to do with it. But also I want to, I want to go off of that. I know the treasurer has made comments and she's right, but I will, when it comes to that we have sole discretion over relief funds and it's built right into the state law, but I would disagree that it's not just the relief, we have sole discretionary relief funds, but the committee has overall oversight over the budget for that office, which would include the donated funds and nowhere does it state that the veterans committee has it. So I feel like we're losing that and that authority is being taken away. And, and that was actually a, that was actually noted by our attorneys back in 2008 when he questioned this in 2018. In January, it was stated that in conclusion, the VA Act does however, provide that the county department will be under the administration of the Veteran Services Committee, which is us. So administration, rules of the administration means we administer the office. The day-to-day operations is done by the director, which is Ramon Baca. So for any initiative to start outside of the committee, I feel would be wrong and it goes against what the veterans and this community wants. And I do get that the, with the taxpayer dollars, or it's going to have a look, you know, they're going to have more insight, but when it's donated funds, we've never had this issue in the past where the donations would go directly to our office and we actually, the Veteran Services Committee gave power to the director to use it on things that typically we wouldn't use taxpayer dollars with. So if it's with our relief, when it comes to relief, if a veteran falls out of the criteria for what we can help with relief, that the director had the discretion to help that veteran because we didn't want that veteran circumstantial. So it's always, it's all about the circumstance. So I guess to end it is, I just believe that the wording needs to be properly made that it still has oversight over the, or the veterans committee still has the oversight over these donated funds, not to say that we want to go to the county commissioners for approval on what we're going to use that initiative for. And again, that was actually our county lawyer made that distinction in 2018 that it, that it does belong to the County Veteran Services Committee, not just the relief, but the, all the funds in there. It's just how we go about permission to use it, determine if it's relief or if it's in the regular budget or the budget for the office. Now, the county commissioners do have authority over the hiring and iron, but the firing of director and employees in there, which is stated in the, the law, which is MCL 35.621 VAI. That's all I have. I don't know if the director Ramon Baca has anything to add to it.
Yeah, no. So I, I heard several instances, gentlemen, commissioners, that you agree that this should be at the discretionary of the committee. That's what they're built for. I think Joe Riker illustrated that perfectly. The way this is written, however, it's simply only at the point if it's for an emergency relief. And however, the nature of the donation doesn't necessarily have to be towards relief. And in essence, the way this is written at that, only at that time with the, with the committee have sole discretion of it. So for, for example, let's use this as an example. If I decide that it's not an emergency relief effort, so I want to buy 10 fishing rods for 10 veterans, because I want to take them on a fishing trip for an outing for physical and mental well-being in the springtime and take them down to one of the local fishing spots. That means the way this is written, it's not an emergency relief. It's simply an outing to benefit veterans. That means I would have to come to you to approve that. And I, and you know, chances are that you, you probably would, maybe you wouldn't, I don't know. But the end of the day, I think that discussion needs to start with the veterans committee. Hence why they're appointed there. So again, I think it needs to be written to where they have, they are delegated and they have the discretion to spend it as, as we deem necessary for veterans of Livingston County and not just an emergency relief capacity. We already have donation lines in our budget. It's already established. And so I'm, I'm really unsure as to why we would have a whole nother line established just simply for this one. Obviously, I, I would ensure that everything's accounted for as well as the committee is there to oversee that every, every dime spent, whether it's buying fishing rods for an expenditure or whether it's to pay for a relief of a water heater that went out for somebody who otherwise wouldn't qualify. Either way, it's going to be accounted for and it would come out of a specific donation line. So all that to say this, I believe that it should be written to where the veterans committee has full discretion of how do we use that. And then if you, if you guys require some oversight, that's just fine too. But I think it needs to start conversation between myself, the committee, and then ultimately if it needs to end with the Board of Commissioners, then that's great. That's fine. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Well, are there any other comments or questions by anyone? Commissioner Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Listening to the discussion we've had the last number of minutes and going back to the original resolution that was approved at General Government last week. The original intent of this resolution was merely to establish a fund within the treasurer's office. And I, while I understand the rationale for the proposed revised version, I think that unnecessarily inserts the county board into decision process on how and when to spend those funds. And I think it should be the discretion of, of the director and the Veterans Services Committee. These are not taxpayer funds, which is our responsibility. They've been donated. And I trust the judgment of the director and the committee to decide when and where and how those funds should be spent. And I, I don't think there's a need for them to come to this board to, to ask permission to spend it. So I would be in favor of ignoring this revised resolution that we got today and go back to the original that was in the original packet. It merely establishes a, a fund which needs to be done. And then let, let the Veteran Services Board Committee and the director decide how and when those funds will be spent.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. We're getting close.
Okay, I, the therefore be resolved has not changed. And therefore I think that the whereas is our only background information. And the only question is, are they legally correct? That's because i- if I read the therefore, the therefore makes it clear that this money is to be used, donated to, to the veterans, fund to be used strictly for recording and use of donated funds specifically in Veterans Services Department. And I think it's understood that it's under, under the, completely under the direction of, of the department. I don't, just because of the whereas is, I don't think that that just because the whereas says may, it doesn't say shall. And therefore says, we are not even considering having all this power that the whereas is, gives us. So in, in my mind, the therefore be it resolved is not changed. Therefore, the original intent is not changed. I'm favorable to do it either way.
Anybody else? We bring it home? Madam Clerk, would you please give us a clear reading on the resolution that we're going to be voting on?
It's the entire resolution.
Including both red.
Before you, the, the motion was to adopt as amended. So it includes the two whereas is in red. So would you like me to read this in the entirety? I'm happy to. Okay.
Make sure everybody understands that the amendments are in there. So no more questions or comments. We'll, we'll vote on this resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It passes. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The next resolution is 2023-01-010. It's a resolution to reconsider and amend Resolution 2023-01-003, adopting the rules of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners and to establish meeting dates for 2023. Can we recall the last time we? Could, could we have a support for that resolution, please?
So moved, Beanie?
Support sample.
The movement supported. Let me address this because this came up in committee when we tried to operate with the with committees of five members. And trying to put, we only had eight committee, eight commissioners to try to spread out over three committees and have no more than two people on each committee. We just didn't have enough, didn't have enough commissioners to adequately cover it if we had to stick to a completed number of five members on, on the committee. So we revamped that resolution and downsized the committees to members of four. And that's the revised resolution that you're looking at here this evening. Are there any comments or questions on this? Yes, sir.
And Mr. Bird, would you mind briefly providing some clarity on the question that was proposed earlier in the evening regarding the Open Meetings Act in committees? Oh, I'm sorry.
I would love for Matt to do that. But we, we did address it. And so I appreciate the opportunity to, to have that be discussed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, happy to respond.
Yes.
It does not violate the Open Meetings Act for us to have a quorum of the full board at a committee meeting for two reasons. All of your committee meetings are posted pursuant to the Open Meetings Act because you are actually performing a proprietary function by narrowing things down, making recommendations. So we are complying with Open Meetings Act and then we're adding something and we do this in many other places where we say we may have a quorum of the full Board of Commissioners at the committee meeting. So the public is on notice that it'll be there. From an operational standpoint, the way you guys operate is your committees are then making recommendations to the full board. So people will have another crack at that. But either way, it complies with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for council while we got them up there? You're a pretty big target. You can't get very far.
Deceptively quick.
Yes, Commissioner Cruz.
So, so whether we have a committee membership of four commissioners or five commissioners, it makes no difference.
As long as we're posting, which we are. So the key thing here is, and it gets a little confusing because some other places operate where they don't post their committees because they're purely advisory. Your committees are actually making decisions by doing the recommendations. So you are correct. It makes no difference whether it's four or five for the Open Meetings Act because we're posting.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify that. That was my understanding.
It's different from the operational question, but yes, as far as you all made strictly, yeah.
Having said that, I, I would like to propose a change to this and I, I feel the finance committee should be a full, full membership of all board members. Well, it just doesn't say that. It talks about four commissioners. For standing committees, consistent for is finances standing committee. We approved the, the rules. It was my recollection that we did specify finance should have a full attendance of nine commissioners. And that for a quorum purposes, there would be five. So I just want to make sure.
They did leave that at nine.
But this was, this therefore be resolved doesn't say that.
I will make a friendly amendment to my motion. I move to amend my motion to note that membership of the standing committees consists of four commissioners, except for the finance committee.
Does that, yes, council.
I just wanted to suggest which shall consist of nine members, which is what your red line says, just for clarification on the finance committee.
Which, which shall consist of nine members.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Is, is, is the motion on the floor to only change the number of commissioners on committees? Or does it, does it also contain the elimination of point two under F? Because that's, that is, is, is your understanding that you are only moving to change that one thing and leave section two or paragraph two of section F intact? Is that your intention?
So my, my original motion was to, to, to also remove section four as, as stay in the resolution. My amendment does not address that. So So that language would remain within, my intent is that language would remain in the original motion. And I just want to note there, my amendment to the motion has not been supported, so we may.
I, I would support your, if, if, if it does not include eliminating section F, paragraph two.
My, my amendment doesn't, but the original motion does.
Okay, okay. So we'll have to do a separate one then. Okay.
Just so.
Can I read the last paragraph just for clarity's sake so that we're all on the same page, Commissioner Fiani? So your friendly amendment would change it. Therefore, be it resolved that the Livingston County Board of Commissioners hereby approve amending the 2023 Board Rules to change the membership committee of the, membership of the standing committees to consist of four commissioners, except Finance, Asset Management, which shall consist of nine members, and to remove section four, Committees F, Committee Appointments, line two.
That is correct. Thank you.
Do we have support for that?
Support.
So.
Supported by Commissioner Helserman.
I, my, my support.
Okay.
My support is, is if it doesn't include the removal of, of section two, line two. And that's my question. It's my understanding that the original motion as given here eliminates that.
That's correct. So is there, is there a second?
Then, then I will not support that, but I think Wes did.
Okay.
I'm sitting next to you. I'm always happy.
Commissioner Gross, would you get ahead of this jam here for me?
I have one follow-on question. In the section of the Board Rules, section F, Committee Appointment, Item Two is being deleted. So I guess for purposes of clarification, will non-members of a committee be allowed to sit on the dais or do they sit in the audience seats?
Well. The way it is now, anybody who's on the Board of Commissioners, as a Commissioner, but not on that particular committee, is permitted to serve, to sit on the dais, question other members, but cannot vote.
Yes, and in my understanding that the, the the resolution as given removes that from, from the Board Rules.
Did we, did we lose that?
Based upon the written resolution as presented, it would remove it. I'm more than happy to make another friendly amendment if that is the consensus of the Board following discussion.
Can we have some thought on whether the remaining members of the Board should be allowed to sit at the dais while the, that particular committee is conducting business?
Mr. Chair, I think there's a point of order. We, we should vote on the Commissioner Fiani's amendment before we proceed to other amendments or issues.
All right. So would you please read the, the resolution that we're going to be voting on, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk? We're not going anywhere until this is finished.
To be clear, we're just voting on the amendment to the resolution, not the entire resolution.
So.
Turn this on. Therefore be it resolved that the Livingston County Board of Commissioners hereby approve amending the 2023 Board Rules to change the membership of the standing committees to consist of four commissioners, except Finance, Asset Management, which shall consist of nine members, and to remove section four, Committees F, Committee Appointments, line two.
That's, that's, that's the correct amendment. That was my intention.
Motion by Commissioner Fiani, support by Commissioner Nakagiri.
So again. You're, you are eliminating, from your motion would eliminate.
All those in favor of this amended, this amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now we're going to vote on the resolution. Oh, I'm sorry. Any nays?
Two nays.
I, I would like to move as a separate item or amend this resolution to include section, section now, number two, as was changed in the
Is there any support for that? Support, Derek.
Commissioner Helserman, can I just clarify that your motion is to leave number two in as originally here in the rules? Okay, thank you.
I'd like to suggest a friendly amendment. The second sentence of that says they must sit on the dais. Right. I would prefer it to be optional. They, they may sit here if they wish, or they can sit there if they wish.
You just use the word may instead of must?
Yes.
Commissioners, please make sure you're speaking into the microphone so that we can hear you on Zoom. Thank you.
I, I would accept that as a friendly amendment. So now we're going to be, and there's support? Yes. So we'll be voting on the, the amendment.
Did you support Commissioner Fiani? Who supported?
Rick.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None opposed? Amendment passes. Now we're going to vote on the, the amended motion. Are there any other, I don't even want to ask this, but all those in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The amended motion passes.
I move to move into closed session for the purposes of collective bargaining negotiations.
Support.
It's a roll call vote. Oh, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domus.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
And Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're in closed session. Want to get that door? Meeting's in progress. Okay. So we have a resolution 2023-01-0011. It's a resolution approving the tentative agreement for a three-year agreement between the Livingston County Sheriff's Department, the Livingston County Board of Commissioners, and the Michigan Association of Police, representing sheriffs, lieutenants. So moved, Helserman?
Support, Gross.
Been moved and supported. Are there any questions or comments? I'm sorry, Mr. Counselor.
Correct. It'll be just Resolution 011.
Zero one one. Oh, didn't, didn't I say double one? All right. So we're good. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Take care, Mike. Thank you. All of, resolution passes. Next item is the accounts payable reports, claims dated January 17th. Chair will entertain a motion.
So move for discussion.
And, and payables, if we could make them all in one motion, please.
Both claims and payables dated December 17th.
Second on both.
Are there any complaints or questions or anything? Let's.
Who, who, who motioned? I'm sorry.
Jay Gross.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item 15 is a discussion on the addition of a moment of prayer to the agenda, to this agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to support that resolution, discussion.
Move for discussion.
Second.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to hear from Jay Drake because he is the one that suggested it. So I, I would think it'd be fitting to hear if he would like to share with us his reasons.
Thank you, Drake. The first session of the Continental Congress on September 7, 1774, opened with prayer. And then in 1759, all sessions of the United States Congress, House and Senate, have opened with prayer consecutively to now 2023. In 1983, the United States Supreme Court ruled that state legislatures were constitutionally allowed to pray. And in 2014, the United States Supreme Court approved, with the public approval of one Barack Obama, that county and local governments were constitutionally allowed to pray. And specifically, to start a meeting with prayer was constitutional. The notions that we're not being inclusive or not being diverse or any of those things, I'm guessing were thoroughly briefed and thoroughly argued before the two sessions of the Supreme Court. And we know the Supreme Court of the United States says it's just fine.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Commissioner Gross?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, to make some general comments on this. Two weeks ago, when we had our organizational meeting, Commissioner Drake suggested replacing moment of silent reflection with the word prayer. And in subsequent conversation, it was decided to forward the matter to the General Government Committee. We met last week. And I explained to my colleagues on, on that particular committee that I didn't feel it was on our plate to make a decision on the subject, that we could discuss it and refer it back to the full board. I feel that inasmuch as Commissioner Drake made the suggestion at a full board meeting, the appropriate action is with this board. Having said that, I want to make it perfectly clear that I have no objection to prayer. I pray every day. When we have the moment of silent reflection, I use that to say a prayer myself. I believe that the power of prayer has been evident throughout the history of the world in many situations. And God knows, we certainly need a lot of prayer these days because of what's going on in the world. So I'm perfectly fine with, with keeping the words of moment of silent reflection. Each of us, myself and our colleagues, we can do what we personally wish to do at that point in time. And I'm also personally comfortable if, if we want to just rephrase it to silent prayer. But my concern on the issue is that if we open the subject up and get into a situation where we're scheduling commissioners and or others to say a prayer for us, that gets to be cumbersome. Scheduling could be a problem. The time of the prayer could be a problem. You know, currently with the moment of silent reflection, we spend maybe 15 or 20 seconds, guessing. And I, I personally don't see the need to go to three or five minutes or something of that sort, regardless of what other legislative bodies might do. So I just wanted to share that with my colleagues to say that I'm perfectly fine with the moment of silent reflection. I will, if we continue that, I will do what I can, what I have done and will continue to do. And each of my colleagues has the ability to do as they wish. I, I don't see a need to get into scheduling, timing, concerned about, about who we might have come in as a visitor to say a prayer with all the various denominations. There's 140 churches in Livingston County. You know, are we going to set up a, a program to have a representative of each of those come at some point? This, in my opinion, has the appearance of potential disaster. I would, I like the kiss principle. And so that's what I'm urging my colleagues to consider. Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner?
Chairman, I'd like to comment as well. When you look up in the dictionary under prayer, it's a noun. And definition is the act or practice of praying to God, a moment of silent prayer. And so as I've been coming to many of the commissioner meetings prior to being elected, silent reflection, I just assumed it was prayer. And that's what I did when I was here. Any of the organizations that I belong to from the VFW American Legion, all chartered by Congress, we pray. We have a designated person that will pray. You know, we do the Pledge of Allegiance, of course. And, and many of the organizations that I attend in our county that are not veterans also pray before every meeting. So I just wanted to comment on that because I think it's important. I, I didn't mind either way, silent reflection or prayer. I, I do think that the way that the resolution's written to bring folks in and churches might extend our meetings a little bit longer than anticipated. But that was my comment. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Time for prayer. I'm not, I, I've given you a resolution how I would write it. I think that this needs to be a commissioner prayer as opposed to opening it up to anybody and everybody. It's a commissioner-controlled prayer. Not, it's, it's not designated to include everyone. We're include all of the, what, 180, 140 churches or whatever? Or the 55 non-church religious organizations? That, and so I, we do need to be careful that it's not understood as a as open to the general public without a specific invitation from, from a commissioner. And I'm not sure. I think that some counties, I think, only the commissioners do the prayer. And not every commissioner might feel comfortable doing, doing a prayer. You know, it's new, like I said, it's new territory for this board. I think that this board probably, in my recollection, and I don't know about Dave Domus's recollection, has never had a prayer as part of the agenda. We already, we already allow prayer. Anybody in the call of the public can pray. I've prayed personally in the call to the public. I use that as a time to pray. It is available and, and my words that it, it should, it. It is available and and my words that it it should, it if, for example, we have this on our agenda, it does not necessarily mean that somebody has to pray. It's not something, my understanding of this is we're not, it's not necessary that somebody pray. Or if somebody is not there to pray or nobody particularly feels like praying, you could say, let's have a silent prayer. I don't think there's any difficulty in that. I I just know that some bodies, it gets way out of hand. And you have, you know, if you open it up as a, to the general public, you'll have all flavors of this, that, and the other thing. On this board, we have, we probably have nine flavors of of religion here on this board. And so if if everyone takes a turn, we're certainly going to get a whole different flavor from each one. So I I will favor it. I think that I think that acknowledging God in itself will bring a blessing to this board. That's kind of where where I am. Yeah. Yeah, and you you see my, my just seven points that I think will keep that will keep us from the weeds and from the problems that maybe other counties or other governmental agencies have run into, so.
Anyone? Yes, sir.
Because this, this isn't the actual motion, though. We're we're just discussing.
Correct. This is discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's there's no motion on the table. This is not the move yet, so.
That's what I understand.
Did you want to share something with us?
Well, I mean, my opinion of it is that a lot of people are triggered, or it's a by prayer. I mean, a lot of people pray in different ways. I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with it one way or another. I think that people that have a problem with it be able to take a minute or two to appreciate somebody else's time. I mean, we're not on a timeline here, so we're not filling a a time slot that would be used up. So we're not taking away from the, you know, the county's time if we use a minute or two minutes for it. So I'm, I just was interested if there was a motion that was on and this was it.
Jay, did you have anything else?
I had notes about the specific Supreme Court case. But nobody has brought any of those problems to to bear. So there's no reason to nail something that hasn't been discussed.
Got you.
In the pre- previous discussion, I voiced my support for the resolution. I'm still in support of the resolution.
Well, at committee, when this issue was brought up, I was in the audience and there were a number of our fellow commissioners at the diocese here. And so I got up and started to say my piece on it. I don't think anybody in this, it's tough to find somebody that doesn't really believe in prayer. And although you find out that sometimes their circumstances at the time determine whether they believe in it or not. Shortly after I got a private pilot's license and I had a Cessna one fifty. So it was a bug smasher, hundred and twelve miles an hour downhill. Friend of mine and my, and I, and he had like, I don't know, fifty hours of complete training and I had about forty-three or something. We flew the thing to Miami at New Year's Day. We flew down and of course, it was dark and so forth. The further we got south, the lighter it got, that seemed to be. We had two stops along the way. We had some of the worst weather I've ever seen in my life. We flew over a mountain range and I tell you, there wasn't enough clean underwear in the entire state of Arkansas to to take care of us on that flight. And to make it even worse, when we got to Miami, we stayed there for a couple of days and then decided to fly to the Bahamas in this one fifty. That's, I don't know, sixty miles of open water, something like that. You get up seventy-five hundred feet, you can't see, there's no land. There's no land left. As far as you're concerned, there's no land at all. And so that's the first time anything, you know, we'd ever done anything like that. And and then on top of that, the radio quit. And in a single, a single-engine, a hundred and ten horsepower engine, bug-smashing Cessna with a with a ninety-channel radio, the minimum that they would let you put in a ninety-channel radio. It not only allowed you to talk back and forth, but it was your navigational aid. Well, it quit. It stopped. And we had to shut it off to let it cool off and then turn it back on again to let it run. And then finally, and and finally, we we saw the Grand Bahama Island coming up. And we, we we had a radio that didn't work. And and I'm going to tell you something. Nobody in that airplane did not believe in God. And there was no way to get around it. And for some of you who remember an old Hollywood movie, God is My Copilot, starring Richard Morgan or Dennis Morgan, it was, you know, I think, I know who that guy, I know how that movie was made and why. And 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 so when I sat in the audience at this committee meeting, I got a chance to get up and speak and I said, I didn't even have a microphone. I think you brought me a microphone. I didn't know which end of it to use. And he says, well, you probably don't need it, you got a loud voice. Yes, I do. So when it comes to something like this, it, my, my choice is is without doubt. Now, should we pray out loud? Now, I pray out loud a lot. Should we pray quietly? Yes, I do. And and my judgment here is that that everybody prays to the same God most likely and can do it in their own way. If we can, if we can all do that in a silent reflection, that's fine with me. I pray quietly a lot. It helps. And 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 I've had a lot of time to do this. I'm eighty-six years old, you know, I would have been eighty-seven, but I was sick that one year. So I want all you guys to get your flu shots. So that that is my story. I I would pray out loud, fine. I think, I think we probably will attract more people to the cause if that's what we're here to do. If we, if we talk in terms of silent prayer for those who feel comfortable with it and for those who want to whisper, that's fine, too. But so that's, that's my conclusion. And Commissioner Nakagori, I would certainly support your your resolution to add prayer or silent prayer, either way, whichever you guys are comfortable with. Amen.
Amen.
Yeah. That was a true story, by the way. I got pictures of this. I'll show you my logbook.
I'm going to move the resolution that I have put forward for for discussion about the particulars. See where it goes.
Motion and is there support?
Support, Greg.
Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I have some comments, some potential changes to the resolution that was just brought forth. Under therefore be it resolved, I would recommend deleting point B. That the chair would equally divide responsibility of praying among each commissioner willing to participate. Under point D, I would eliminate the last part of the sentence that says, or arrange for another person to pray. And I have questions on point F and G. I haven't made up my mind how I feel about that as yet, but I would suggest a friendly amendment for those items that I've identified.
What was your first, first amendment?
To delete point B and to change point D by eliminating the words, or arrange for another person to pray.
I will accept your friendly amendment for D to make, your, your point is that only commissioners can do this. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be my preference.
That's fine. I think that that's, I think that's really the best. As far as B goes, I think that there needs to be somebody that's overall responsible for the dividing of it unless it's a simple you know, every, you know, you know, it just seems to me that somebody needs to say, are we going to do it, you know, for, somebody going to do it for two months and then another person do it for two months? Are we going to do, do it? You know, there's two a month, two meetings a month. And so if we go around, that's four, you know, four, four months till we get now, let's see, is it four months? Four months till we get back to us, so. But we just need to have some way, and it seems to me that the chair is the person to, that's the reason why I put it in 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 the chairs. The the three minutes, if if it's only us, I don't think we have to worry about that. But if we open it to other people, there are some people that preach instead of pray. And so if it's only us, I don't think we need to have the three-minute rule. I I that would, that would be a friendly amendment, too, that I would accept. Also, Mr. Norfolk said we should change in the therefore be resolved, the moment of pray should be changed to prayer. And under A, this is intended to allow prayer or in any way, add the word any before way, demand a prayer. Jay.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Helsnerman, I'm in favor of the discussion of of this proposed resolution. And I suggested some changes as a friendly amendment. But having said that, I'm really not in favor of the resolution as presented. As I alluded to earlier, I'm a fan of the KISS principle. And in that regard, I I was thinking of making a, an amendment or a motion to change the wording on the agenda instead of saying a moment of silent reflection, just to say a moment of silent prayer and let it go at that. However, I just wanted to add that right now we're discussing your proposed resolution, so.
Commissioner Nakagori, I was waiting for Commissioner Helsnerman. I thought you were.
No, I, I, I took some friendly amendments here.
All right. Commissioner Nakagori, please.
Yeah, this is really a point of order. I, Mr. Chair, when we, when we say, and we have our county lawyer here so we can get clarification, when we say friendly amendment, what what did we just do? I mean, I'm used to somebody offering an amendment and then we as a board voted up or down and then move on to the next amendment. But the, when we say friendly amendment, I'm not really sure what that does. And so I'm hoping for clarification on that if.
So it's really up to the board how you operate with something that I will loosely categorize as a friendly amendment. Generally, friendly amendments are things like pray to prayer. They're not materially altering anything, they're really just taking care of a typographical issue. If there's no objection, that's kind of how it's being posed. Without objection, we'll consider this a friendly amendment. So normally what I advise is that when a friendly amendment is being discussed, if the mover accepts the amendment as friendly, the chair will go. If there's no objection, we'll consider that a friendly amendment. That takes care of that technical issue regarding whether or not it needs to be voted on or not. Somebody objects, fine, we vote on it. I do agree that if there are substantive changes, the way that is a best practice is to do the more formal. Here's my amendment, let's have an up or down on it, especially when it's something that could change the outcome of the resolution. The friendly amendments so far are, I suppose, changing the outcome. I think as long as there's no objection, the way that it's transpired here is fine. If you want to address them one at a time, that's fine. When you're dealing with something new like this, it's also fine to basically say, we'll bring this back with a revised or if that's necessary here, too. It does get confusing if you start really hammering out the details of a resolution on the fly at the board meeting. I did get a chance to review it beforehand. I I will say that in its current form, with the friendly amendments and its prior form, I have no legal concerns with what's being proposed here. So just as a general statement on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Norfolk. Now, I understand what a friendly amendment is. So I, you know, I just share for my colleagues with regards to the, what we were characterizing as friendly amendments, the discussion, I I object to all of those. I I I like this as it is. You know, if we want to amend it, offer amendments and we'll see what the will of the majority is.
Yes, Commissioner. Based upon recent conversation, I withdraw my proposed friendly amendment and hereby make a formal amendment proposal to make the changes that I identified earlier with the addition of deleting item F as Commissioner Helsnerman suggested.
I'll support.
Motion to amend and it's supported. Questions?
So the, you know, I, because you made, you made some amendments that I, I didn't consider as friendly. And and Mr. Chair, I would just ask that we deal with each one of these amendments separately so that we have a clearer.
All right, let's take it one at a time. Give us an amendment. Vote it up or down. Mr. Smith.
Do you have a vote on the floor? We technically have a vote on the floor? I'm sorry, can I ask our legal counsel to opine on this?
So at the request of any commissioner, a question that can be divided, that would be an order. So if there's a request to divide the question, which is this amendment, that's an order. And so what we would do is have the mover state each amendment individually. And then there can be an up or down vote on each part of the question that is presented on the table.
If I recall Robert Schules correctly, the motion to divide the question requires a second. If it does, I'll second Commissioner Helsnerman's. So just to make sure we got the bases covered.
Mr. Legal Counsel, just for my purposes, are we on a motion to amend or are we on a motion to divide the question, just for my clarification?
We are now on a motion to divide the question. Thank you for the support. And so that would be the first vote here on dividing the question, which is in order.
I would second that.
We had you as the mover on the division of the question and Commissioner Nakaguri as the support. It is not debatable, so it is simply an up or down vote on the motion to divide the question at this point.
So all those in favor of dividing the question, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? We'll divide the question and then we'll take these issues one at a time. Let's take item one. We need a motion to, I'm sorry, Mr. Gross. Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Helsnerman.
I.
Are you going to move the first?
Oh, okay. I have, I have several word changes. I have four word changes. If we can, or if we do them, I guess we can do them separately if we want. I guess that's what we're doing.
We're going to take them, we're going to take these issues one at a time.
Okay.
I move to amend the resolution to add ER after pray and therefore be resolved and add any after in under section A.
Okay.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to make some changes, and it's been supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? One down. Are there any other amendments? Or resolutions, feather?
I.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we delete item B, that the chair should equally divide responsibility for praying among each commissioner willing to participate.
I support that. I can support it, can I? I thought so. Soon as you said the chairman, well, that, this is the time to, you know, to go over the side. So we have a, we have a motion and it's supported. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If it is not the chair, how are we going to divide it up?
If it is not the chair?
Yes.
Counsel, what are you telling us?
Well, I will just share my experience in other counties, which is that the chair solicits a volunteer before each meeting. And the way that that happens usually is they kind of just work their way down the list of who, whoever has done it last, and then move to the next person and ask them. And if they say no, moves on to the next person. What ends up happening in those situations is there typically is someone who is more comfortable or proficient, and then they end up doing a number of the prayers, is something I have observed. But legally, that's, you know, you can spell it out or you can make it something like that.
So there's a motion on the floor and it's going to be, it's supported, but I'm not quite sure what that motion is. Would you please read it back to us?
It's a motion to delete section B.
Okay.
And that was moved by Commissioner Gross, supported by yourself, Commissioner Domas.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Can we, can we roll, call that one, just for clarification?
Sure.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman?
No.
Commissioner Domas?
No.
Commissioner Sample?
No.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
No.
Commissioner Drick?
No.
Commissioner Deaton?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fiani?
No.
We have two yeses, seven nos, motion to amend, does not carry, it fails.
I'm making a motion to amend B, that the chair shall appoint a commissioner. At each meeting? The chair shall appoint voluntary commissioner. The chair shall solicit a volunteer of the board of, a commissioner to bring for the prayer. I don't know how you want to word it, but.
Any support?
I'll support.
So there's a motion to have the chairman solicit?
Volunteer.
A volunteer. And it's supported, all those in favor?
Question, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Deaton, how is what you say different than what's written on item B currently? As I read, I mean, the chair is going to divide the responsibility among each commissioner willing to participate. I, I'm not sure how, I, I just want to understand how, what you're saying differs from, from what's written. I, it is unclear. Or sample, Commissioner Sample, sorry, excuse me.
Yeah, I understand. I don't think there is much difference in it. For clarity, from what our counsel was saying, I was trying to follow, follow more along the lines of what he has kind of instructed.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Never mind.
Okay. The amendment isn't clear to me. I kind of, I understand the intent of it, but. Is your intent, is the intent of it, that the chair shall choose somebody to equally divide the responsibility? Is, is, you're, you're just, the chair will choose the person that's responsible for organizing it? Is that, is that the intent or the chair will?
Well, my reasoning for it is, is, it says equally divided, right? So if, if, if a board member wanted to look at this and say, I don't feel it's equally divided. So, so I guess if you just appoint somebody that's willing to participate in prayer, then it's up to the chairman to choose whoever on the board you, you want to select.
Okay, should we just drop the words equally divide then? Would that? Be, I'll be honest with you, it's, it seems to me that's, that's more what you're looking for, in, in a few words.
Well, Chair? Yes, sir.
In an attempt to clarify, I, I think if I understand Commissioner Sample's suggestion that instead of the chair pointing at a time, he can approach any one of us and ask if we would volunteer to, to lead a prayer, yes or no? And if, if whoever he asks declines, he can ask somebody else. I would, I think it should be voluntary on the part of commissioners and not mean you're off.
Yeah, that's why I said willingly, who are willing to, willing to participate. That's what was, you know, I, 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 I thought that that would take care of that. And I would assume that people that are willing to participate would want an equal division of it. I don't know. Maybe, maybe that's not necessary, but it's, it seems to me that that's a fair way to do it. Because not, you know, maybe five of us will do it, maybe three of us will do it. And nobody should feel left out if they don't or looked down upon if they don't.
Do we have something on the floor to vote?
We do. We have a motion by Commissioner Sample to amend B, to read that the chair shall solicit volunteers for the responsibility of praying. And I have Commissioner Smith as support for that motion.
There are no other comments or questions. We'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Do you want to raise your hand or one?
Commissioner Nakagiri and Commissioner Helsnerman are nos. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have another one? A, B, C, what's the next one?
I would move that we amend D to strike the words, or arrange for another person to pray.
Been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. Does that three or two?
Two.
Two. Seven to two. No, the other commissioner. Helsnerman?
I don't.
Is that the end of it? Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on this subject? Not? Yes, sir.
It seems to me a little while ago during the discussion, we, it was suggested that perhaps item F should be either modified or deleted with respect to the period of time.
Point of inquiry. Sure. Do you have a different period of time you're suggesting?
Fifteen or twenty seconds.
Is that your formal motion? It ought to be fifteen or twenty seconds?
All right, I'd make a formal motion that point F be changed to, the prayer should not exceed one minute.
Support.
Okay, so item F goes from three to one minute? Been moved and supported. Are there any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Can I just have the people who voted yes raise their hands, please? So we have three and it's Smith, Gross, and Commissioner Deaton. Thank you.
Chair shall have the discretion in this matter for all questions not covered in this policy. You really want to say that?
We would always ask the chair if.
That's the guy with the arrows in the bag you're talking about? I thought so.
I would make a motion that, that we table this at this point until, we postpone till next week and we have a fresh, our next board meeting, that we have a fresh copy of what this is and the, because this is, this is new territory. I think that to make all of these changes just kind of on the fly like we're doing, I think it's better that we just take our time and get it right. And that, that's my motion, that we, we take the, we table this motion, the, we, as it is, and we pick it up next week.
There's a motion on the floor to table what we just done, is there support? Yes, sir.
We need to do this at the next full board meeting, correct? That's in two weeks, the twenty-seventh.
Right.
Ten days.
So there's a motion on the floor, is there support? Is there support? Hearing no support, the, this is a dead issue.
Then I would ask for a vote if, if discussion's over.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Six to three.
Can I please just ask those three who were no votes to, please, raise your hands? Gross, Domas, I see two. Is it only two who voted no to this amended resolution? Okay, thank you.
Call to the public is next, item sixteen. Anybody left?
I do not have any cards here in the room for this second call to the public.
I'd like to just make a couple of comments and you might have noticed that this evening the sheriff came, came up, I invited him to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You won't believe it, but that took fifteen seconds to, to make happen. And I chose earlier to have someone else who was unavoidably detained. And so all I really did was give him a call. It was Bob Bazada. I said, Bob, we're going to be having a board meeting this evening. Would you show up in time enough to lead the, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? He said yes, and then called me later, he couldn't make it. So that's what, that's it. But the whole thing took a pretty easy, careful, not careful, but just a pretty easy and quick thing to have happen. My intention was to, to do that at every board meeting, to ask somebody from the audience or somebody from the community to come up and lead us in the, in the Pledge of Allegiance. And without objection, I'll do that at every other board meeting that we have here while I'm chair. Did I do that right? Do you like that? Let's see. I got a thumbs up from the attorney. I must have done, got lucky. All right, so there's nothing, it called to the public?
I don't see any hands raised.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That's it.